Dr. Mohabben Mustafa from the UCLA School of Public Health was not able to be with us today. Ironically, he's ill, so we hope that he recovers quickly. Ray Regian, Chairman of the State Historical Board. Please come forward. Welcome to the committee, Mr. Regian.
Thank you very much, Senator. I find the comments made by the Caltrans persons rather interesting. Some points here that I'd like to respond to. First, let me explain. I am chairman of the State Historical Building Code in Sacramento. We are in the office of the state architect. We were created under the Public Health and Safety Code, Sections 18950 to 18961. Recently, in 1985, our board was upgraded to a full regulatory body. We have the authority to promulgate regulations, to interpret them, and act as an appellate body, and we also supervise all state agencies having jurisdictions over historical properties. Going back to 1983, I first submitted a letter from our board to Dr. Knox Mellon, the State Historic Preservation Officer, on July 12th of 1983. Following that, a letter to July 13th, 1983, to Caltrans, District 7, Environmental Planning Section. Also, another letter on August 23rd of 1983 to the Federal Advisory Council on Historic Preservation. Followed by comments that I made in a public hearing, November 15th, 1984, to the California Transportation Commission. And finally, a letter of December 7th, 1984, to the California Transportation Commission. In all these letters, there were certain points that I mentioned that were extremely relevant to the situation at hand. The historical properties that may be impacted by the proposed Meridian Route of the Long Beach Freeway. They included, among other things, the statement in the draft environmental impact statements that indicated by Caltrans that the historical properties that were in the path of the freeway could be mitigated by relocation. In the first place, the Caltrans statements should have been submitted to our board for review because we are the only state agency that has full jurisdiction over all aspects of preservation, relocation, reconstruction, restoration of historical properties in California.
That was not done?
I have not received one informal phone call nor any official statement from any public agency, state or federal, on this issue. Therefore, every environmental impact statement that has been submitted so far that has to do with the protection of the historical properties and the path of this proposed route are defective. I am making this as a final statement because I'm not going to do this any further. Apparently, it has no impact, and maybe other legal recourse may have to be resorted to. Part of the problem is that the legislature, in its wisdom, of which you're a member, and the governor, signed a document creating our board, which includes 18 state experts, including heads of every building enforcement agency in California and the state, as well as representatives of local building enforcement agencies, representatives of the county supervisors, representatives of the legal California cities, representatives of the professions of architecture and engineering. It is recognized that we are the ultimate body with respect to expertise in the protection of historical properties and protecting the public health and safety accordingly. And there are several problems here, not only in the fact of relocating them, which undoubtedly will have a terrible jarring effect on any historical property, of which I'm very familiar since I'm a historical architect. I have been in the profession for some 30 years. I have moved many. I've been involved with establishing the Heritage Square here on Pasadena Freeway, which you've all seen. I'm still working on those. I know what problems are involved with moving one or two small houses. But the proposal here to move these multitudes of historical buildings in some mass migration and where they're going to be put for five or 10 years while the freeway is being built, and who's going to maintain them and take care of them, and then put them back and restore them, in an environment similar to where they came from, is beyond imagination. However...
Mr. Sanchez, would you please come forward?
However, I don't want to speak for my board. My point that I'm making tonight is that the law requires that Caltrans submit this to our board for its formal review and input. And then you'll take it from there with respect to the environmental impact statements. I don't want to get into a debate tonight on it, although I can answer questions. I'm here for that purpose.
No, I don't want this to be a debate. I want this to be a hearing of inquiry, and I'm just concerned as to why Caltrans has sought to not follow the law in that respect.
We deal primarily with the State Historical Preservation Officer. He is our person that should be the contact of the year. We deal primarily with him. He's our State Historical Preservation Officer.
In Caltrans?
No, State Department.
In the State Department?
Separate state. Not a Caltrans.
And have you submitted all of these requests and proposals to that officer? And that officer has not communicated to the state board?
I think there's a misunderstanding. If the learned gentleman would read the Public Health and Safety Code, Statues 18954 to 18960, he will find that all state agencies having jurisdiction over historical properties with respect to the public health and safety must submit and coordinate with them on any matter that concerns the physical aspect of the building. The State Historic Preservation Officer deals with the environmental aspect of whether or not sites are historical. We ourselves do not designate the historicity of landmarks and sites.
That's correct.
That is determined by the State Historic Preservation Officer, we call SHPO. That's the only problem where they come into contact with Caltrans. But SHPO has no jurisdiction over the public health and safety issues, is what I'm talking about.
I think what we should do, then, Mr. Sanchez, is to -- I'm going to request a legislative council's opinion so that we know exactly what the interaction is, so that you're not in the fog in terms of what you need to do, and clearly what the issues that Ray has mentioned ought to be cleared up so that we know exactly who ought to be interacting with whom and at what time. And I will request that, if you can get that for me, Steve. We'll request a legislative legal opinion as to where we stand on this whole issue so that we resolve it. Thank you.
I'm going to give you a copy of the documents that I mentioned with the letter of transmittal, Steve, Senator. But there's one other interesting point to be mentioned. It is not only the issue of the relocation of the historical properties, and how they're going to be maintained during that course of relocation, and how they're going to be restored, and where they're going to go to or return to after the freeway is built, if it is. There is also the problem of the preservation and maintenance of any and all historical properties under the jurisdiction of any state agency, of which we're also involved. And my concern that I have is that I have heard that some of the historical properties that are owned now by Caltrans in the path of the proposed Meridian Route are not being maintained properly. And therefore, I'm going to formally request a survey and a report from Caltrans, reporting to our board of the current status of those properties that they own now, and also what procedures they are taking with respect to maintenance of those properties, which may be in place until the year 2000, according to what was said tonight. Who's going to maintain them until then? And how are they going to be maintained?
You have that in a formal letter?
Yes.
All right. You want to give that to Mr. Sanchez, then, so that he's...
Well, I have this copy, this one copy, which is written to you, sir. And I'll be happy to give him a copy or mail him a copy if he'll give me a card.
Great, then we'll just communicate on that. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your effort. Mr. John Kane, Deputy District Manager for the Automobile Club of Southern California.
Senator Torres and panel members. My name is Robert Kane.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have a brother named John. I'm the district manager of the Alhambra, San Gabriel, and Temple City offices of the Automobile Club of Southern California. Previously, I've also worked in our Highland Park and Los Angeles offices. Over the years, I've heard from the people and business leaders of these communities about the need to complete the last six miles of the Long Beach Freeway Route 710. The Auto Club's engineering staff has looked long and hard at the community problems associated with the completion of this critical link. We support the findings of Caltrans and the California Transportation Commission to complete the gap along the Meridian Alignment. Their conclusions are environmentally responsible and sensitive to the regional and community needs. This was recently reinforced by the CTC in September when Mr. Robert Nielsen, Executive Director, said that the building of the tunnels is part of the mitigation measures as outlined in the environmental report. This was in answer to allegations by a private consultant who indicated that the tunnels would not be built into the system. Over the past 20 years, the route has been completed for 20 miles and served thousands upon thousands of people every day. The huge Los Angeles metropolitan spread requires ample access to provide for the economic, business, and social health of the area. Completing the freeway gap will create, for the first time, a direct link to downtown Los Angeles from Arcadia, Monrovia, Bradbury, Duarte, and east to Glendora, and directly connect, for the first time, the San Joaquin Valley, the Proto Centers of Southern California. The overload of traffic has resulted in increased accidents, property damage, personal injuries, and delays for emergency vehicles. Every year of delay in completing this vital regional freeway link costs 10 lives, $30 million in unrealized benefits, and $20 to $25 million in increased construction costs. Some other detrimental effects include the inconvenience and cost to thousands of motorists who have to drive out of their way each day, causing unnecessary gasoline consumption and travel time. As in the human circulatory system, this traffic, deprived of its main artery, has to find relief in the veins of city streets. The major vein between Alhambra and Pasadena is Fremont Avenue. A four-lane street in Alhambra narrows to a two-lane winding road in South Pasadena. The freeway traffic goes through Alhambra, South Pasadena, and Pasadena, but on the city streets instead of a freeway. Traffic jams and accidents unfortunately has become a way of life. As far back as 1959, the California Master Plan of Freeways and Expressways called for the construction of Route 7 as an essential regional-state transportation link. In 1964, and as stated here before, in 1984, the state established the route alignment along Meridian Avenue. The Los Angeles County Transportation Commission has also affirmed the adopted alignment. In closing, we urge completion of Route 710 along the Meridian Alignment. It provides maximum benefit to the movement of people, goods, and services while minimizing adverse impact on the communities. We are confident that by now you realize that this freeway gap must be completed for the benefit of improved transportation for the entire community and the region. I thank you very much, Senator.
Mr. Kane, I'm not convinced of that last statement, and I'm quite perplexed as to the statement just issued, I believe, last week by your organization, of which I am a member...
Thank you.
...that says to us that we need more, almost double the freeways that we have now, without any reference to rapid transit or other ways to diminish the air pollution along, especially in Los Angeles Basin. On what basis did the Automobile Club use to advocate for the construction of more freeways as opposed to alternative uses for transportation needs?
Thank you for referring to that report. In that report, it does refer to this particular route and for the completion. For this is -- the gap has caused many problems for the entire region. Certainly, in just taking my Auto Club hat off and putting it on my community hat, as past president of the Alhambra Chamber of Commerce, as part of an advisory group with the Los Angeles County Transportation Commission, and as hearing from the constituents along the corridor route, it's obvious that this needs to be completed. It's obvious for economic reasons as well as the community needs. In Alhambra, I'm also on the...
What does that have to do with the statement by the Automobile Club that we need to increase almost twofold the number of freeways that we have already in L.A., without any reference to rapid transit alternatives?
Well, we believe in a multimode of transportation. That report indicates it's vital for the continuation of our mobility that we do have not only the construction going on, the maintenance of our freeways and streets, but also the completion of vital gaps like the Long Beach Freeway.
Was there any mention made in that report of rapid transit alternatives that ought to be pursued as well?
Sure. We believe in a multimode of transportation. In other words, there are many alternatives to movement of people. The report is talking in terms of the numbers and the volume of people that will be here by the year 2000.
I understand that, but the report did not advocate rapid transit as an alternative to freeway construction. Is that correct?
We have a report, and it's called Toward a Better Tomorrow, that advocates a multimode of transportation. This report primarily focused on the need of our freeways and the need of streets and roads.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kane.
You're welcome, sir.
Alva Lee Arnold. Welcome to the committee, Alva.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to tell you about the little details of South Pasadena and their freeway. The first organized meeting expressing concern about the impact of the Meridian Route on our city was held at the Marengo School Auditorium in 1956. A group who identified themselves as a South Pasadena Property Owners Association publicized their meeting, urging all concerned citizens to attend. My husband and I attended that meeting and thus became aware of the freeway plans. From that time, the concern has always been not only the adverse impact of the area that would be taken for the right-of-way and the homes immediately adjacent to the freeway, but the terrible effect on the entire city. The schools, the identity of the city, the way of life that our cohesive town provided for the residents would truly be lost with the construction of the freeway through the center of our city. All of this has been ignored all these years. In fact, there has been snide remarks made about, well, just annexing to Los Angeles if we could not survive as an independent city with the loss of our tax base. We have been a voice crying in the wilderness. However, our plea for help was finally heard in 1983 by the Federal Advisory Council on Historic Preservation. Considering the importance of this council, very little emphasis has been placed on the hearings that were held. First, let me tell you who they are. There are 19 members of this group, and they are the Secretary of the Interior, the Secretary of Agriculture, four other federal agency heads designated by the president. Currently, they are the Director of the Office of Administration, the Secretary of the Treasury, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, the Secretary of Transportation, the Architect of the Capitol, four members of the general public appointed by the president, four historic preservation experts appointed by the president, one governor, one mayor, the chairman of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and the president of the National Conference of State Historic Preservation Officers. There couldn't be a more informed, professional, yet objective group of people to analyze the impact of the Meridian Route, not only on the city of South Pasadena, but on the city of Pasadena and the community of El Surino in the city of Los Angeles. In 1983, pursuant to Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act and the Council's Implementation Regulation, FHWA sought the comments of the council on the alternatives of constructing the highway along the Meridian Alternative or on the Westerly Alternative, which would swing the highway to the west around much of South Pasadena, but still would result in great damage. When it proved impossible to reach agreement on ways to avoid or mitigate the adverse effects of the project on historic properties, the council's chairman referred the matter to a panel of council members, who met in Pasadena on August 15th of 1983, reviewed the project, and received extensive reports and public comments. The panel of five people found that a number of alternative corridors and design approaches to closing the freeway gap had not been fully addressed, and recommended that these be studied. Caltrans studied these and other alternatives, and in September of 1984, provided a report to the FHWA setting forth the results of its study. On October 18th of 1984, FHWA transmitted this report to the council and requested its final comments. The entire council of 19 accordingly met on November 26, 1984, at the South Pasadena Public Library to conduct a final review of the project and of the Caltrans report. After an onsite inspection, a report by the council's executive director, clarification of issues by representatives of Caltrans, FHWA, the California State Historic Preservation Officer, and representatives of the city of South Pasadena, the council deliberated and made the following comments. I would like to read them all, but I know time prevents it. But this one, I thought, was so important. The Advisory Council on Historic Preservation's Alternative E is attractive for many reasons. As indicated in Table 1 of the Caltrans report, it would cost about $60 million less to construct, displace about 500 fewer homes, 900 fewer people, and 20 fewer businesses than would the Meridian Alternative, and would avoid the bulk of the impact on historic properties associated with the Meridian. The Caltrans report asserts that it would have the negative effect of destroying about 72 percent of the Pasadena Avenue Historic Districts and 80 percent of the Prospect Circle Historic Districts. But the detailed map given on Figure 7 in the report shows it only grazing the edges of these districts. It appears likely that the effects indicated on Figure 7 could be avoided or reduced through careful design. Similarly, Figure 7 suggests a marginal impact on the El Surino North Park, but Page 58 of Caltrans report indicates that a significant portion of the park would be lost. While it is probably true, as Page 59 indicates, that some impact on the park could not be avoided if Alternative E were selected, it is not at all clear what this impact would do to be of great substance, or that it could not be relatively easily mitigated, possibly through location of the park itself. The report also indicates that construction of Alternative E would necessarily take the San Diego Substation, an important local power plant. Figure 7, however, shows the substation to be slightly outside of the right-of-way, or at least subject only to marginal impacts. It is hard to believe that these could not be reduced or eliminated through good design. The report goes on page 60 to say that the alternative to taking the substation would be to take the Sequoia School. But Figure 7 doesn't show the school. Table 1 of the report indicates that both the substation and the school will be taken. It is not clear which of the several representations given in the report is correct. All of these ambiguities, combined with those surrounding the urban island proposition referred to above, makes a basis of rejecting this alternative set forth on Pages 64 and 65 of the report rather suspect. And incidentally, in this referring back to the urban island in the El Surino District, they pointed out that the adverse impact below Huntington would be much the same, and the area that would be affected by this urban island was only a very few streets north, and they doubted very much that there couldn't be a solution to that. But here again, in trying to limit my comments to seven minutes, I'd like to read the letter that the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation submitted to the Secretary of Transportation at the conclusion of this report. It says, "Dear Madam Secretary, on November 26th, the council met in South Pasadena, California, and reviewed the proposal of the Federal Highway Administration to assist the California Department of Transportation in closing the existing gap in State Route 7 of the Long Beach Freeway. The comments of the council on this undertaking resulting from a motion adopted unanimously by the members' present voting are enclosed. I must stress to you the strong feeling expressed by the council members during the meeting, informing the basis for our comment, that every effort must be made to seek reasonable alternatives to the use of a highly destructive, extremely expensive Meridian Alternative as a location of the project. Although we recognize that legitimate transportation needs exist justifying closure of the gap on Route 7, you will note that we feel that if the choice must be made between the Meridian Alternative and no build, the latter should be preferable. We feel strongly, however, that the alternatives to the Meridian Route, including not necessarily limited to those we have suggested and considered so far, have not yet been given a fair hearing. Even on the basis of a scanty analysis given some of them so far, it appears that one or more, or a combination of several approaches, may well be prudent and feasible. Both the full council and the panel that commented on this project last year have proposed consideration of alternatives involving reconstruction of the Pasadena Freeway. I want to underscore our position on this. The Pasadena Freeway is itself a historic property, but it is not a property in which people live, and as a functional piece of civil engineering with a role to play in the present and the future, it must be expected to change. We believe that changing it would be much more preferable to the destruction that would result from one of the Meridian Alternatives. And incidentally, the Variation E includes double-decking the Pasadena Freeway, and I don't think that is what they say here is E. At the present time, it appears inevitable that with or without use of the Pasadena Freeway to accommodate the Route 7 gap closure, the Pasadena Freeway will have to be massively rebuilt within a few years to meet modern standards. This will certainly be an expensive project. We believe it would be short-sighted not to consider now the costs and benefits of combining reconstruction of the Pasadena Freeway with the completion of the Long Beach Freeway relative to those of carrying out both projects separately. And I might comment too, sir, that as my understanding, that we're going to have a four-level interchange where the Pasadena Freeway and the Long Beach Freeway cross anyway, and that's going to involve a great deal of reconstruction of the Pasadena Freeway. Thank you very much."
Thank you very much, Alva. Welcome to the committee.
Thank you for -- I'd like to thank you for calling this public hearing meeting. I really think that the Long Beach Freeway extension has to keep there in the forefront of a lot of the news that's happening right now because it has -- people say, oh, it's been going on for the past 20 years. But for people who live in the corridor, when you have, you know, when you're a tenant from Caltrans, or even if you live alongside of the corridor, it's there every day, and you don't see it in the news, or you don't see it, or you think, oh, well, maybe they may not build it, but maybe they will, but still. So I'd just like to thank you for holding this public hearing. But the main reason why I would like to make a, you know, testimony here is that we feel in El Surino that we're at the mouth, and whether it's the Meridian Route, or whether it's the Westerly Route, or whether it's Variation E, or Variation B, C, D, E, whatever, we're at the mouth, and we're going to get, you know, the destruction that when it comes. It's going to destroy over 1,000 homes, and the majority of those are in El Surino. And we may not have historical monuments as categorized by the, you know, Historical Preservation Society, but one woman, one... Preservation Society, but one woman, one time we had a fundraiser on our block, and this woman who lived there, who her husband built the home, they got married in the home, they had their four children in the home, was had her daughter drive her by to visit the house. And she gave us a check for over $100 to keep on the fight, to keep this freeway off of our, out of our neighborhood. She now lives in Pittsburgh, and she just said that, you know, that house held many memories for her, and it was a historical site to her. So all along this corridor, you know, these homes that are going to be destroyed cannot be replaced. The state talks about maybe relocating these people, but the people that live on this corridor, the quality that they can, that they would be placed in wouldn't be the quality that they have. They bring up their children there, they go to this nearby school, and they go on, and then they have their grandchildren, you know, come back. It'll also divide up our community into two sections. We'll have a freeway come through, just like South Pasadena would have a freeway coming right through and divide up their communities. And to do that, it's going to destroy a lot of our little neighborhood markets that have been established for over 20 years. It's going to destroy a lot of the neighborhood businesses that have access, you know, people can come off and on, off of Huntington Drive, off of Valley right there where the freeway And I think it also destroys a chance for, in our neighborhood, to really have the ability to have mass transit. Right now, and I believe in it was Stockbridge and also Lowell, there used to be RTD lines that ran up and down there. They have now cut them out, and it's been some time now, and we've talked with senior citizens and other people that utilize these lines, and they really miss them. They have to walk some distance, they have to call Dial Your Ride, or whatever, you know, the services is that's available, to get to the major artery, Huntington Drive, or up into South Pasadena, or into the Civic Center. And we really feel that if progress is to, you know, move people back and forth, and to really to deal with congested arteries like Valley and Fremont, which you probably drive every day, and if it's going to take a six-mile extension that's going to do more destruction than actual improvement in people's life, and it not enhances mass transit that was badly needed, you know, for people, then it's not a project that the community, that both communities need. And one other point is that I know we brought up with you, you had a meeting with us once in one of our backyards there in the corridor, and we were discussing a few things, the possibilities about alternatives. And there's, you know, if Disneyland can put a monorail and move people around, I'm sure there's other alternatives, and there's other ways and innovative ideas that maybe, you know, some people other than Caltrans engineers, which usually seem, you know, they like to put in freeways, that people can come up with in order to deal with this congestion, in order to move people back and forth. And also, you know, we talked about a bill of deletion, which we would like to see come out of, you know, I don't know if it would come out of the Committee of Transportation, or would come out of the Senate, you know, the Senate House. But I would like you to consider that, and to see what you could do on that, because I really feel that our elected officials who represent the area should do, you know, as much they can to try to deal with this. I know we had our past councilman, Art Snyder, who was very pro-extension, Meridian Route, and now we have Councilman Alatorre, who's in the same boat. He wants, you know, that freeway to go through, and I don't know what kickbacks they're going to get, or if what their, you know, main reasons are for this, but I'm really happy to see that you've come out, you know, and taken this position, and maybe it can go a little bit further now in helping us out and saving our homes. Thank you.
Ms. Lila Cox, Long Beach Freeway Association. And then next will be Margaret Wallace. If your witnesses can come forward so we don't have to wait so long for you to come up to the, great. Next will be Margaret Wallace, Yes on G-G Campaign, and Laura Hudson, Urban Planner, South Pasadena resident. If you come forward to the front row, and that way we'll take you up as soon as we're finished with the previous witness. Thank you. Welcome to the committee, Ms. Cox.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you very much for having this hearing, and for allowing me to be on your agenda. I am a former mayor of South Pasadena. I'm a longtime resident, business owner, and have raised my children through the schools here. I'm very familiar with this problem, having lived on all of the routes for quite some time, in a house which South Pasadena has not judged to be historic, but which is, qualifies nationally as a historic monument. In 1964, when the hearings were first held on the selection of a route, the city of South Pasadena wanted it to go up the Arroyo, and we all advocated it very strongly. We were very surprised when they had a large group of people from the west side of South Pasadena oppose it, and the commission went with them and selected the Meridian Route. We then asked for the Variation, which would come up the Arroyo and cut across the northern portion of South Pasadena, somewhere underneath Columbia, which was one of the studied routes. In those days, there were green, blue, and all kinds of colors, and I don't really recall them all at this time. When that selection was made, Fletcher Swan, who became a mayor of South Pasadena also, and I were very active on the Legislative Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, and the city conferring with the chamber decided that it would be wise to send someone up before the actual selection was firmed, and asked the commission to please reconsider, because we had never heard even the names of the people who had opposed it, and although they were valid recommendations of citizens of the city, we felt that there had been things not fully considered. The result was that the Meridian Route was confirmed, and then they decided that they would take all of the dirt from the cut, where they had placed it in Pasadena, as you know it is in a cut in Pasadena, and they would take all that dirt out and pat it into a five-story-high route, right across the center of South Pasadena, and put the freeway on the top of it. Mr. Stropel had a penthouse on his building down on Meridian, and it would have gone right by the top of the penthouse. And we opposed it, and in those days, you had to have a public hearing before you could advocate a route. So the city of South Pasadena held another hearing at the high school, it was very widely attended, and we had the consensus of opinion that it should go in the Arroyo. Again, we tried to advocate that, and two members of the city council went to a meeting in Highland Park, to one of the clubs, men's clubs, I don't remember, it was Kiwanis Rotary, and told them that they wanted it there, and these people in Highland Park were very upset with them and told them never. So they came back, and they asked Andrew Odo, who was the new city engineer, who had not quite gotten his license yet, to draw a line on the map on the Westerly boundary of South Pasadena, and bring the route in from the Arroyo to the edge of town. We did that without any demographic studies, without any engineering studies, and instead of saying, "We don't like the Meridian Route, now sit down and engineer what is really best for South Pasadena," we wanted it to go west, no matter what. That was done, and since Mr. Odo was not confirmed as known, we hired Willie Lockman to advocate this for us in the legislature. We have had many, many studies, and have tried very hard to have a Westerly route. We at one time went so far as to say, "We'll pay for part of this study," and then we had to be sued and pay anyway when we didn't want to, and we were again turned down. We live in a neighborhood where all the streets are closed. We have one access out onto Orange Grove in the morning, or onto Fremont, or you can go down a block and try and come back up, and then cut across Orange Grove to go onto the Pasadena Freeway. It's almost impossible, many times of the day, to get out of our neighborhood. On other times of the day, people trying to find ways out of the heavy traffic come careening around Prospect Circle and up into the Parkway on the corner next to my home. And we really feel something has to be done to alleviate this mess. The freeway, as adopted on the Westerly Route, is of deep concern to me for several reasons. And I talked to Montroy about this, because he's had the same problem in Duarte, fighting the terrible noise that comes from an elevated freeway. And I said to him, "Why would you then want to help South Pasadena have such a noise, a lineal dirt and noise factor coming across their city?" And he says, "Well, I'm not in favor of it that way, but people should have what they want." I don't want a high-rise freeway spewing noise and dirt right adjacent to the Arroyo School. I don't want high-packed dirt roads, because after it crosses Mission, it becomes a packed road, cutting across the city and cutting off streets. I don't want it coming across and making a cut across the, above the Pasadena Freeway. Now, when the Pasadena Freeway, South Pasadena Freeway Fighting Group was going, one of the chamber groups got together, and through a study made by Chevrolet, we said, "This will cut our city in half." And we were talking about the five-story-high dirt road with a tunnel on Meridian and a tunnel on Monterey Road. And that would cut our city in half, and we were using a sales record that said people won't shop on the other side of the freeway, and that was where we got this advocacy. The Pasadena Freeway does not bisect the city. It comes across, all the streets practically are open, and a number of us who live north of that freeway have served on the council, and on the commissions, and still do. And I believe that there are many things to be said for completing the freeway, and one of them is safety. One of them, if you came into the auditorium tonight, and saw, as I did, the speeding cars trying to pass one another, getting up Fair Oaks and coming down Fremont, I would like to see us have our city streets back again. During 1977 hearings right here in this auditorium, we considered, would the cut-and-cover be a mitigation, something that we could possibly live with? And a straight line is the easiest and best way for construction, and for taking the less amount of homes and people. And a depressed freeway is much better than an elevated freeway. And if we had the mitigation of the tunnels, we would have the opportunity then to put the covers back onto the city use. We could take the city yards and put them on the covers, we could use it for school or whatever would be a use for the city, which is a mitigation we've never given before. When we got the opportunity to take the dirt fill out and put the freeway below the surface, many of us thought that was a mitigation that we could live with. Nobody wants a freeway, but we have it now, and we have it on our surface streets. And if you want to see the dirt that accumulates from a freeway, go down Fair Oaks Avenue any time in the morning before it's swept, and see what comes off of the streets, and the tires, and the trucks, and that sort of thing. We have it now, and we have it in our city. Well, many of the times, we have been told, "It doesn't matter, the state won't build it anyway, even if you agree to the covers." Our city attorney then, Charlie Martin, said many times that he, as an attorney, can draft an agreement which is binding on the state. I believe that, and I agreed with it. But being cautious and feeling that the covers were a mitigation that had to be a part of it, going by the library and the high school, and any public portion of it, and anything to mitigate it, I wrote to the commission. And then I sent this to several people, and you've heard it referred to today, that there is a commitment, and I would like to read, I'm not going too far over my time. I'd like to read some of this to you.
Very briefly, please.
Thank you. I'll just read their letter then. This is in response to your letter of September 2nd, 1986, addressed to Mr. Joe Levy, Chairman of the California Transportation Commission. In that letter, you raised the point that a consultant for South Pasadena has caused great concern in the minds of South Pasadena citizens by his statements, that the state would claim funding shortages as an excuse for not building tunnels as a mitigation measure on Route 710. You pointed out that these statements have greatly impeded the possibility of obtaining South Pasadena's approval of the adopted and many times reconfirmed route. It is the position of the commission and the department that the tunnels are a part of the mitigation measures, and will be so stated in the environmental report. The department and the commission have a legal responsibility to make sure these mitigation measures are done as specified in that report. And I can only say that the consultant statement is an error. This matter will be discussed again at a subsequent meeting of the commission. I wanted this to be part of the record, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Margaret Wallace, and I speak as a member of the Committee for Yes on the Preservation E-G. Senator Joy, President of the Committee for Yes, had another meeting and did not attend tonight's hearing. In the early days of the fight against the Meridian Route, I was content to let others take my battle, no law. I have watched those fighters work long, hard, honest hours, trying to work out a compromise, a solution to the freeway route, to no avail, to be dismissed and disregarded, to be ignored and put down and frustrated by Caltrans time and time again. Is South Pasadena the butt of some cruel private joke? They won't or cannot build through Beverly Hills, AKA the Glendale Freeway, or complete the Embarcadero through San Francisco, leaving a cement ramp to the skies as a sort of sculpture, memento to the art of freeway design, by the way. Both are larger cities, and it didn't take 20 years of negotiations to abandon those routes. But you can plow your way through small-town South Pasadena, it's no big deal. Well, gentlemen and others, it is a big deal. We are a big deal. This small town is truly representative of the great American way of life. We are a close-knit community of people who know each other, work with each other, respond generously to calls for help and support. Our children grow up in an atmosphere of recognition, where they do not have to be just a face in the crowd of a too-large school system, where they can study in quiet classrooms, where there's safe to cross the streets, and to breathe the air, at least compared to the dangerous pollution and noise the Meridian Route would bring through the city. What happens to the education of these children, education that is valued highly by those who live here, if the ADA funds are cut? Take the heart out of South Pasadena, and you are saying, "The values of small towns do not matter." Values that have been fought for and protected and coveted for 200 years count for nothing. South Pasadena is a microcosm of all that is good in people and for people. How else can you explain why the community has fought the Meridian Route so long? Destroy the heart of South Pasadena, and you destroy a unique community rarely found within a megalopolis, or anywhere else for that matter. Is this truly necessary? I think not. It is the historical truth about freeways that they generate more traffic. The 210 east through Pasadena is now bumper-to-bumper, and traffic is back on the surface streets. Drivers are trying to get on the darn thing, or more likely, trying to get off, so that they can get to their destinations. That is what will happen here. In answer to those who say, "Get the traffic off our surface streets," I say, "You haven't seen anything yet." Those who use a freeway will still have to come off the five-level interchange, traverse our north and south, east and west streets, to get to their San Gabriel Valley destinations. Only there will be more of them. The traffic count on Fremont is 12,000 to 15,000 vehicles a day. Projected for the Meridian Route are 179,000 vehicles, 7% to 10% of which will be trucks. That's over 17,000 trucks, big trucks, per day. Many of these vehicles will be trying to get on or off one ramp or interchange of the other, and will be using our streets. There are those who say the fight is over. Cut the best deal with Caltrans. I have news for you. The fight is not over. What happens if the funds do magically become available? If we have not pressed for a decision in our favor long before the year 2000, we, our children, and our grandchildren, could be trapped into the Meridian Route freeway no one wants. Don't be lulled by that distant date. You cannot cut deals with Caltrans. Southern California is strewn with unkept Caltrans promises. Promise them anything to get the freeway built, it seems they don't have to keep their promises. Other testimony that was given tonight be aside. Other testimony that was given tonight be aside. The Committee for Yes wants to save all of South Pasadena while our opponents would sacrifice the whole to satisfy the interests of a few, their homes and their special interests. Caltrans asked them to ask to trust them. How can we trust them when they cannot give us clear answers or guarantees? The Auto Club's own study states, "There is an urgent need to make the existing freeway system perform better." Isn't it logical to improve that which you already have? Why not look at alternative modes of moving traffic? Why not funnel more money to make these systems work more efficiently? What sense does it make to build yet another freeway, destroying something precious in the doing? Another freeway fraught with the same problems all the other freeways have? Focus, if you will, on the bumper-to-bumper traffic, bumper-to-bumper crush on Lake and other arterial streets in Pasadena. Do you really think that's better? Do you really think that is progress? Is it progress to take the heart out of a small town to create yet another uncontrollable freeway?
Ms. Laura Hudson. Mr. Stanley Hart from the Sierra Club will be next. Welcome to the committee, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you. I'm Laura Hudson. I am a South Pasadena resident, but I'm also an environmental planning consultant. I prepare environmental impact reports for a living. I have reviewed the Caltrans environmental impact statement for the proposed completion of the Long Beach freeway and a couple of items concern me very much. Needless to say, one is cutting through the heart of our city and destroying the historic properties. But the one that is of even more concern to me as a professional is the potential economic impact on the city of South Pasadena of the construction of this freeway. The Caltrans document states that the loss in property tax revenues to the city of South Pasadena would be approximately $1 million annually. That represents 20% of the current annual budget of the city of South, revenues of the city of South Pasadena. That's a 20% loss in revenues to the city of South Pasadena from the construction of this freeway. In addition to that, 20% direct loss of property tax revenues. The EIS did not consider the fact that properties located adjacent to a freeway typically hold steady in value or even decline in value as a result of the increased noise and air pollution associated with being adjacent to a freeway. That would mean that not only would the city directly lose money, they would lose the potential appreciation value of the homes remaining on either side of the freeway route. The other thing that the EIS did not address is the fact that those homes represent the clientele of most of the businesses in South Pasadena. The EIS does note that we have very few regional-serving businesses. Most of the businesses located in the community serve the community. The loss of those people would mean the loss of sales to the businesses. And if you take a direct sales tax per capita ratio of approximately $40 a head for the South Pasadena, that would represent losing about 10% of the annual sales tax revenue of South Pasadena, just taking the people out and using a per capita ratio there. That's a lot of money for a small city like South Pasadena to lose. South Pasadena was, is, has been very affected by the passage of Proposition 13 in terms of the revenues because we do rely so directly on the property tax to keep the city running. I don't think that you could call that something that would be, well, the EIS does not propose any mitigation measures to assist the city of South Pasadena to continue to function without that revenue. And it's sort of, we're going to pay in terms of the quality of life, the quality of services that we are able to afford in the city for putting this regional facility through. That is the main thrust of my concern and one that I would like to see any supplemental environmental document address. You may be able to avoid the historic properties, but you aren't going to be able to avoid the revenue base of the city. I'm concerned that the police service and the fire service and the street tree trimming and all the things that make South Pasadena a place that I chose to live and to raise my children won't be available and that the whole community will suffer, not just the people adjacent to the route. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stanley Hart. Mr. Stanley Hart, representing the Sierra Club. Welcome to the committee, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you very much and thank you for the opportunity of appearing here, Senator Torres and the members of the panel. My name is Stanley Hart. I'm the resident of Altadena. I'm a civil and structural engineer. I've had a very long career, much of which has been occupied with highway matters. Many years ago, I conducted cost-benefit studies for the World Bank for the principal highways of the province of West Pakistan at that time, amounting to an eventual grant of $120 million. Those highways have now been built. I've been the chief bridge design engineer for the Los Angeles County Road Department. More recently, I've acted as a consultant in forensic cases involving the collapse of the Arroyo Seco Bridge, in which I was the principal witness against Caltrans and which resulted in a very substantial settlement for the deaths of six men and the maiming of six others. I also acted as a witness in the case for the collapse of the bridges at Silmar in the 1971 earthquake. More recently, I've conducted studies of the expenditures of the city of Pasadena regarding the automobile sector and the income from the automobile, automotive sector. I can testify that the city spends seven times as much for automobiles and services related to motoring than they get back from the motors. I've also conducted studies of the Santa Ana Freeway and of, and more recently, a study of optimal pavement design at the University of California at Irvine, so much for my career. I'm also a spokesman, as you've indicated, for the Sierra Club on transportation matters and I'd like to read a short statement, if I may. The Sierra Club opposes the construction of the Long Beach freeway through El Cerrino, South Pasadena and Southern Pasadena. We oppose it for familiar reasons. It will increase air pollution, traffic accidents, and fuel consumption. It will not solve our growing transportation problem. We have learned to our dismay that automobiles and trucks inevitably increase to fill the space available. We also oppose the freeway for other reasons. We note that this project has not been honestly justified by an economic analysis. Those who invest public funds and resources have a special duty. They must demonstrate that the expenditures will result in a net benefit. In other words, if you spend $500 million in constructing a freeway, you want to make sure that you get more than $500 million worth of benefit in return. I submit that that has not been done. But Caltrans routinely undertakes the construction of billion-dollar freeway projects on the seat-of-the-pants judgment of bureaucrats and the dynamics of fork-barrel politics. This is partly because the funding, as much as 92%, will come from the Federal Highway Trust Fund, which is invariably seen as someone else's money. It is also because Caltrans, an agency employing tens of thousands of planners, engineers, and construction inspectors, must generate many new construction projects every year. This is the organization which, without overview or supervision, makes the decision as to where or whether a freeway is to be built and conducts the studies justifying the project. Caltrans is not only the judge, the jury, the prosecutor, and the defense counsel, it is also an institution whose very existence depends on the outcome. A no-build decision, if repeated often enough, would be the sentence of death for this huge and powerful agency. We Americans have pride in our political system and its ability to provide an unmatched environment for the pursuit of happiness. We also believe in the free-market economic system, which guarantees us a productivity and the economic efficiency that makes our nation strong. But the expenditure of billions in the construction of urban freeways is left to a process which has no acquaintance with democracy, with market forces, or with benefit-cost analyses. It does not differ markedly from that employed by the socialist nations. The nominal purpose of the route, this particular route, is access to the Long Beach Harbor for trucks hauling freight from the San Joaquin Valley. This was mentioned earlier. But there are three routes which are preferable for these heavily laden trucks. The San Diego, Hollywood, and Golden State freeways are all shorter. Their highest pass on the San Diego freeway climbs to only 700 feet above sea level. On this route, a truck driver from the San Joaquin Valley would climb 900 feet more to 1,600 feet. You can guess, I think, how many truck drivers would select this route. We believe that the net effect realized from this expenditure, over half a billion dollars, will be a disbenefit to all except a few. It would destroy a charming city, South Pasadena, as well as several pleasant neighborhoods, El Cerrino and Southern Pasadena. The Pasadena interchange should be connected to the end of the Pasadena freeway at Arroyo Boulevard. This connection could provide at least 90% of the benefit, such as it is provided by the whole project, but at a very small fraction of the cost and abuse. It's an abomination to use public monies for the profit of few and for the destruction of the values of the many. The cities, the counties, the libraries, and the schools of California are notoriously short of funds. We urge the legislature to abandon this project and to divert the budget of resources to more useful purposes. And thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Sue Nelson. If you'll please come forward, witnesses, we'd really appreciate it so that we can move as quickly as we can. Thank you. And Mr. Bob Cook, No-INGG campaign, if you'll come forward as well. Welcome to the committee, Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening, Senator Torres. Thank you for inviting me to express my views tonight. I'm Jess Reynolds. I'm speaking in favor of alternatives to the Meridian Route for Route 710, the Long Beach freeway. I'm a person with considerable experience and expertise in the field of transportation. My 45 years of public service included 41 years in highway and freeway design for the California Division of Highways, now known as Caltrans. Many sections of freeways in the metropolitan area of Los Angeles were designed by me or were designed under my direct and/or general supervision as district design engineer. I'm a licensed professional engineer in California and I'm a fellow in the American Society of Civil Engineers. During my 14 years of retirement, I have, as a non-paid consultant to the city of Pasadena, South Pasadena, prepared several alternative design concepts for the freeway in a westerly corridor through South Pasadena. All of South Pasadena's westerly route plans minimize the taking of homes and minimize impacts on historic places and districts. All of its plans are for a multimodal transitway that place freeway, rail, mass transit, and railroad relocation in one corridor. Caltrans' Meridian Route would remove a total of 1,410 homes, 620 from El Cerrino, 630 from South Pasadena, and 160 from Pasadena. South Pasadena's best westerly route plan would remove a total of 890 homes, 500 from El Cerrino, 230 from South Pasadena, and 160 from Pasadena. All of South Pasadena's westerly route plans save 120 homes out of the total of 620 needed to the Meridian Route in El Cerrino. South of Templeton Street, all plans, including Caltrans' Meridian Route plan, take the same 220 homes. South Pasadena's original westerly route plan through the non-pristine area along the Pasadena freeway north of York Boulevard and the double-decking plan on the same location would save another 325 to 400 homes out of the total of 630 for the Meridian Route in South Pasadena. South Pasadena's alternative Plan B.C. on the bluff above the Arroyo Seco would save 95 homes. There would be no appreciable change in Pasadena. Cost savings would vary from $50 million to $100 million out of an estimated total cost of $500 million, depending on the alternative selected, plus another $20 to $50 million for replacing the housing stock. South Pasadena's westerly route plans would avoid all historic places and impact fewer historic districts in South Pasadena than would the Meridian Route, and they would have the same impact as the Meridian Route on those historic places and districts in Pasadena. Rail mass transit in the Westerly freeway corridor from Pasadena to York Boulevard and in the same corridor with the relocated railroad and Arroyo Seco channel from there to Los Angeles would not interfere with LACTC's planned location out north Broadway and Huntington Drive. It would be a segment of a future line from Los Angeles through the San Gabriel Mountains to Palmdale and the Antelope Valley. It would serve Pasadena, South Pasadena, Eagle Rock, Highland Park, and Dodger Stadium now. Railroad relocation in the Westerly freeway corridor from Pasadena to York Boulevard and in the same corridor with rail mass transit and Arroyo Seco channel from there to Los Angeles would eliminate the nine remaining grade crossings in Pasadena and 11 in South Pasadena and provide the impetus to relocate the railroad from the back streets of Highland Park to eliminate another 19 for a total of 39. Railroad relocation would be an extension of railroad in the middle of the I-210 Foothill freeway in Pasadena and also be a segment of a future line from Los Angeles through the San Gabriel Mountains to Palmdale to the Antelope Valley and San Joaquin Valley. Funding of railroad relocation can be obtained from several sources. That relocation of the railroad in Pasadena was accomplished with very little cost to the city, and most of the cost of lowering the railroad through Alhambra came from the state's grade separation fund. With the Long Beach freeway as a part of the multimodal transitway in the westerly corridor through South Pasadena, real benefits will accrue to all the communities involved, Alhambra, El Cerrino, Highland Park, Eagle Rock, South Pasadena, Pasadena, and to the greater Los Angeles region. However, Caltrans has never given serious consideration to any of the westerly corridor alternatives submitted by South Pasadena that do meet state standards, but has made changes of its own and introduced fatal flaws and then rejected the alternatives as unsuitable. Now that more attention is being given to the, now that more attention is being given to the need for and retention of affordable housing and court decisions that mandate replacement of housing stock, location of a freeway that removes large numbers of homes needs to be scrutinized closely. Perhaps the decision that was made in 1953, when the Long Beach freeway route was adopted up to Huntington Drive, and the decision in 1964, when extension of the so-called Meridian Route northerly of Huntington Drive was adopted through established and densely populated areas, should be reviewed in light of present-day thinking. There is an alternative I will refer to as the Home-Saving Route that has not been studied since the 1953 adoption, and it should be. It would require several hundred fewer homes than the Meridian Route in the El Cerrino area, as it would extend north-westerly from Valley Boulevard over an existing stormwater channel and then through open space for hookup with the Westerly Route in South Pasadena. Such an alternative in combination with the original Westerly Route through South Pasadena and the Historic Preservation Bypass Route in Pasadena would require about half the 1,410 homes needed for the entire project on the Meridian Route. Cost would be substantially less than for the Meridian Route and benefits of the multimodal transitway discussed for the Westerly Route could be attained. Such a route location would avoid all historic places and districts in both South Pasadena and Pasadena. To obtain the many benefits that are possible and to resolve the controversy that existed all too long, I recommend that your committee initiate a concurrent resolution to retain an outside and independent consultant to examine seriously the combination of this Home-Saving Route through El Cerrino with the original Westerly Route through South Pasadena and the Historic Preservation Bypass Route through Pasadena as an alternative route for the Long Beach freeway. Such a consultant to be totally independent of any Caltrans connection or orientation and free to address the comparative merits of this alternative route with the Meridian Route. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sue Nelson. Thank you for your remarks. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you for all your attention. My name is Susan Nelson. I am an environmental planner, been teaching planning, and been writing and reading about freeway building for a number of years. I'd like to offer, not go through everything that I have written because most of that has been said, but what I believe has been said, but what I believe as president of the Friends of the Santa Monica Mountains Parks and Seashore, I'd like to offer another way. And that is, it's not difficult to delete a route. And one of the things I think South Pass may have gotten into is to panic over this divide and conquer idea that you can shift this thing someplace and it will somehow work. I believe when I heard Lydia Ocasas speak about the El Surino neighborhood here, everything feeds there, and yet that neighborhood actually is historic as in South Pass. I think it's probably 50 years old, probably could go on the National Register. It makes no sense to me. This whole area is a corridor, is a historic corridor. What we did in 1963, the same year, I guess, this sort of hit the fan here, I came home to my house in Mandeville Canyon where I had two, four little children to find out that we had a freeway going over our house into the wilderness. And what was that for? It was for a 200,000-person subdivision being promoted by multinational corporations. And I was a little innocent in those days. I didn't understand who we were fighting. We fought everybody, the mayor, everybody. And we ended up stopping the Beverly Hills Freeway, the Malibu Canyon Freeway, the Pacific Coast Freeway. That was not government. That wasn't anybody protecting Beverly Hills. It was a group of people who got together and said, "We are going to stop it." And we didn't waver around about, "Oh, it's going to be better over in the Arroyo Seco, it's going to be better here." You're not going to improve your traffic with freeways. All you do is cause an industrial pollution of your area. Now, what could be less important to do in this particular area of the world? I have moved down to Echo Park in the last three years and have been doing other environmental work, and I think the air quality in this area is absolutely toxic. It has... And South Pass at least protects itself with trees. By the time this freeway goes through, it's going to be 10 times worse. And think of the children in the schools, not the ones that are just adjacent to the freeway, but all over back up in Riverside. It's absolutely redundant to be doing this in 1986. There's no reason for it. The only thing I can suggest to you is that the mayor of South Pass, I think spoke the right words when he said that not only is it a boon-dog or something for Caltrans to go forward with, with 500, how is it, $300 million, which should be spent elsewhere, I would suggest on parkland, too. I mean, we created 50,000 acres of parkland in the Santa Monica Mountains. It's taken us 20 years, and everybody has tried to stop us, and you just have to keep going and get it done. I would suggest a bill in the state legislature that deletes the freeway and have everybody go up there and run the gamut, even if Willie Brown is on the side of development today, which he is. You can win. You have to go up there and, you know, send delegations. We used to get 5,000 letters to the committee. I will tell you right now, 5,000 letters and the doors are open, even to the governor who wants to promote all this development. The issue that I see is that you now have federal tax laws that are going to give great tax credit to low-income housing and replacement housing. And what you're going to get in here is not only a destruction of your city, but it's going to be high-rise city. It's going to look like a lot of what's happening to Pasadena downtown. I now work with a group called Save Hollywood where we have 1,100-acre redevelopment in Hollywood. The whole thing is going to go high-rise. Now, just how much congestion can this city take? It can't take it. So, we need to have alternative light rail transportation. We need more shuttle ride-to-ride services. We need real total transportation, and I think Caltrans should be disbanded. They are right now trying to bring a huge pipeline down through from Adiangelus Forest down through the center of the City of Los Angeles, down Western Avenue, all through the ghetto, because they figure those people won't talk back. Well, if they're starting to talk back, just in East LA, they went after the prison, and in South Central, they're going to go after the pipeline. That's why I'm in Echo Park. You should stop this.
Thank you. Welcome to committee, Mr. Cook.
Good evening, Senator. On June 18th of this year, I addressed the city council offering an alternate course of action to resolve the impasse between the city and the state relative to the Long Beach Freeway. I stated to the council that night, and I quote, "Contrary to much misinformation, a legally binding agreement between the city and Caltrans covering design features can be executed if both parties agree to be so bound," unquote. At that time, I presented to city attorney Boz two legal opinions from Caltrans, another opinion from the Federal Highway Administration, and a ruling by the Third Appellate District Court of Appeal, State of California. All these documents supported my position. I was hopeful there would be an effort undertaken by the city council to at least investigate the possibilities of obtaining such an agreement. If any effort was made, I was never informed. Pursuing this matter independently, I was made aware that the City of Downey had reached a comprehensive agreement with the State of California regarding Route I-105, better known as the Century Freeway. Upon receipt of the freeway documents from the City of Downey early in September, I informed city manager John Bernardi and councilman Jim Hodge and briefed them regarding their contents.
Mr. Cook, I don't understand what agreement you're referring to.
It's a comprehensive agreement, freeway agreement, and a performance agreement that the City of Downey entered into with Caltrans.
To do what, sir?
To build a freeway and allow the City of Downey to have control or input to the design features.
With... In respect of the Century Freeway?
Both officials suggested the information should not be brought up until after the freeway advisory election. As chairman of the Public Contracts Review Commission, I felt that the electorate should be made aware of all options before the election. After all, Mayor Prentice has recently stated that it would be less than honest for a public official to withhold important information from the public. At this time, I would like to present some of the conditions and specifications that the City of Downey was able to obtain through negotiations with the state. First document, a freeway agreement, probably contains nothing out of the ordinary. It deals with right-of-way to be acquired, closing of city streets, relocation of city streets, construction of frontage roads and other local roads, and other construction affecting city streets. Passage of AB 1623 precludes the need for such an agreement with the City of South Pasadena. The second document marked Exhibit A is a plan map detailing construction plans approved by the city. It should be noted that the freeway is totally submerged within the city limits of Downey. The third document marked Exhibit B is a performance agreement. It should be made very clear that this document does not guarantee that the Century Freeway will be built by the State of California. What it does guarantee is that if the freeway is ever built, it will be built according to conditions and specifications set forth in the performance agreement. There are 22 sections of this agreement, each addressing important areas of concern relative to the City of Downey. Section 16 deals with design features the state shall incorporate into the freeway project. These features are categorized A through H. Item A states, "Concrete walls, earth mounds, or a combination thereof to be constructed of standard height in lieu of chain-link fencing along the right-of-way line." This is really great when you consider Caltrans was committed to build a submerged freeway to begin with. Other noteworthy conditions covered by the agreement are as follows. The obligation to funds for all construction contracts by the interstate completion deadline presently established by the Congress as September 30, 1990. Further, the breach of any provision of this performance agreement will also constitute a breach of the freeway agreement. South Pasadena was offered similar guarantees by the state in 1977. It appears no one was interested at that time. I would like to read part of a letter dated March 1, 1977, addressed to Mrs. Elizabeth Luckinville from WF Pond, Deputy District Director, Caltrans, with copies to Honorable William Harker, Mayor, Honorable Fletcher Swan, Councilman, Honorable Aldley Arnold, Councilwoman, Honorable John Sullivan, Councilman, and Honorable Robert Beer, Councilman. Letter is addressed to Mrs. Elizabeth Luckinville, South Pasadena Unified School District, 1327 Diamond Avenue, South Pasadena, California. Dear Mrs. Luckinville, there are several ways in which South Pasadena can be assured that the Long Beach Freeway Transitway would be constructed with features mutually agreed upon by Caltrans in South Pasadena. These ways include, one, the South Pasadena City Council could enumerate the features necessary and conditional to their acceptance of the plan. Permission of such features would nullify acceptance of the plan. Two, the South Pasadena City Council could require that the features appropriate to a freeway agreement be incorporated in the agreement or refuse to execute the agreement. South Pasadena would retain the effectiveness it has had opposing the adopted route by refusing to execute an agreement without the features conditional to acceptance of the plan. Three, South Pasadena could require a design agreement be executed with the city and Caltrans concurrently with the freeway agreement. This design agreement would contain details of construction not appropriate to a freeway agreement. Four, the projected plan described in the approved final EIS must be constructed in full to comply with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, CECA, and the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA. The Federal Highway Administration would not approve a project for federal funding without the features described in the final EIS. State and federal auditors monitor projects to assure compliance with the requirements of CECA and NEPA. I submit these documents as a blueprint to open a constructive dialogue between the city and the state. Councilman Sam Knowles passed a remark at last week's city council meeting that, and I quote, "Guarantees are not worth the paper they are written on." Now, to me, that doesn't sound like they want to cooperate or even listen to any kind of ideas that Caltrans might want to offer them. I would hope that our city attorney could draft an agreement free of fatal flaws that would protect the City of South Pasadena. In order that the community may have access to this documentation I have presented tonight, copies have been delivered to the city librarian and the city clerk. I would like to send my appreciation to Senator Torres for offering me time to be heard at this forum. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cook. Mr. John Runhell, Neighborhood Action Committee. Is he still here, John Runhell? Kathleen Kuppler, resident of La Cañada. And Bill Campbell, city of La Cañada. Welcome to committee.
You'll have to excuse me if I'm a little nervous. This is a little bit bigger than talking in front of a Mother's Guild meeting. I have lived in La Cañada, Flintridge since 1966, and in 1967 started to list, to go to most of the pre-freeway meetings that were given by Caltrans and the people of La Cañada. They were held with Caltrans representatives, and we assumed that the freeway would have at least a 300-foot buffer zone with heavy shrubs and planning to absorb the noise. They also assured us that the freeway would be totally subterranean. As you know, about three-fourths of our freeway through La Cañada is subterranean. The other quarter is above the ground. In fact, it is elevated. In 1977, Caltrans committed to build sound walls for us and has since reneged. The community detrimentally relied on the representative of the state agency. Caltrans recognized the need for walls in La Cañada in January 1977. They admitted the area's sound exceeded 70 dbas, criteria for noise. They committed to this in writing and to install sound barriers in a letter dated January 28, 1979. In 1980, again, Caltrans withdrew its support and maintained our area did not qualify. I can't speak too much for the fact that we don't feel that Caltrans says what they really believe. Independent noise studies in our area were made, and it showed very, very well that our area well exceeded the now-present 67.5 dba readings. I find, Senator, one of our very key problems dealing with Caltrans is that the key people never stay around. They're in constant change. Because of this constant change, we never get to talk to the people that spend the buck. That is a problem. Caltrans refuses always to address the subject of safety, especially near our schools. Five schools in La Cañada, Flintridge use the main street, which is Foothill, which traverses underneath the freeway bridge. We need a wall on either side of this bridge to prevent trucks or autos from going over the bridge and possibly hurting one of our children or some of our people of La Cañada or outsiders. This has not even been listened to. They completely refuse to address the subject of safety. How long can we stand as a community and have luck that nobody is hurt? They seem to just refuse to listen to us again. If there's one fact that I would like to present to you tonight that I have found in dealing with Caltrans or listening to the meetings that I've gone to with them, and that is, what you see is not what you get. It is my plea for you to take care of the problems of the freeways before you even think of building something new into an area. We have asked for freeway walls, noise and safety walls. Caltrans absolutely has no reason or rhyme to say no to us, but they always say no to us. Thank you, Senator.
Bill Campbell, city of La Cañada. All right. Mr. Chris Valenti will represent La Cañada Chamber of Commerce. So, Valenti, are you here? We're going to try and wrap this hearing up with one more witness after Mr. Valenti. And let me assure you, as I do with all hearings that I conduct across the state, that if there is someone here who was not able to testify, we will accept your written response and include it as part of whatever record we compile together to be part of the official hearing today, even if you had testified in person. And we want to make sure that everyone's views are included with whatever report we're able to give back to the committee and clearly whatever report we're able to compile in the end. So, Valenti, welcome to committee.
Well, nice to meet you. I am the elected president of the La Cañada, Flintridge Chamber of Commerce. Now, this is a unique situation because we have residence and business, and we are so upset with Caltrans. The truth of the matter is, we just don't like you guys anymore because you haven't kept your word with us. You want to come here to South Pasadena, and you want to build a freeway, and you haven't finished the job at our place yet, and all we want is you to finish the walls, the sound walls that you promised us. We have St. Francis High School, and I was there about a year ago, and I asked them to please take the measuring, the test, at St. Francis. And I'm not exaggerating when I tell you it's about maybe from the freeway, 50 yards or so.
It's a Jesuit school?
It's a... Oh, capishan. A Jesuit, shame on you. These are the capishans. And then, of course, we have St. Bead, another Catholic school, right there. We have Flintridge Prep, which is a private school. We have five private schools in the community besides our own public schools, and we're very concerned about the noise. We already have the freeway. We have to live with it. But the one thing is important, let's try to improve on what we have, and we owe to the people in our community. We'd like to invite you to stay overnight and sleep near the freeway and see what the sound is, if whoever's in charge can do this. I mean, seriously, you think I'm joking? I know there's people there who would give you a room just for one night and let you hear the noise from the trucks, and it's getting worse. That's all I want to say, that Caltrans, you owe us something. You owe us those barriers, those sound barriers. And Senator, we would appreciate your help. And next Thursday, I'm meeting with Newton Russell, Senator Newton Russell.
I was just going to recommend that you do that.
Yes, and I know Senator Newton Russell, and he's going to... Yes, and I know Senator Newton Russell, and he's going to meet with us over at St. Francis, and he's going to see it. So, we can use all your help. We all need to work together.
That's agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jim Hodge. Councilman?
Welcome to the committee, Councilman. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Torres, for inviting me to speak. I came here tonight without an expectation of making a statement, so mercifully, I'll be brief. I just have a few observations of the discussion here tonight. I admire the poise of the automobile club representative who read the prepared statement endorsing or applauding the environmental impact study of Caltrans immediately following an hour of questioning by Senator Torres, which severely undermined its credibility. I can only conclude that an organization that would endorse such an environmental impact study also has severe questions concerning its credibility. My final observation is that, assuming that Caltrans will keep its guarantees apart from the experience that La Cañada has had, any discussion concerning guarantees of design modifications are really beyond or beside the point in view of some of the serious environmental concerns raised tonight, regardless of whether it's Westley Route or Meridian Route. I think that alternative modes of transportation have to be considered to keep South Pasadena the community that it is. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of the people who testified tonight. I'd like to thank the Caltrans people for coming here this evening as well to share their viewpoints, as well as those who are in favor and opposed to Proposition G.G., and also to many of you who have fought so long on this issue. Many of you may not realize, but in December of 1982, I introduced a bill to delete this portion of the freeway. It was defeated overwhelmingly in the legislature, and it was defeated by Caltrans. It was defeated by many of the surrounding cities to our community here in South Pasadena. We need to continue to raise the issues that I believe we have raised here this evening. I believe Caltrans is sincere in terms of requesting those specific Department of Health Services reviews and looking into the Department of Education issues regarding average daily attendance and the impact it'll have to make sure that their figures are correct in terms of loss of revenues, in terms of business as well as property value. But I believe the witnesses that we tried to put together for this evening represent a microcosm of society as a whole. And as I've traveled across the state in terms of hearings related to toxic waste problems that we've had from Santa Clara to McFarland to Stringfellow, to here in the San Gabriel Valley, one thing is clear, and that is government needs to be more responsive to its people. And the only way to become more responsive, whether you're working in an administrative agency, as many of these people do tirelessly, as those of you who work in the business field, in the education field, and in the political field, we're all in this together. And I think that's one variable that we have to keep into consideration. But this is not just a freeway issue for South Pasadena. It's a freeway issue affecting the quality of life, and the decisions that we make regarding this issue clearly are going to affect generations to come. We are toying with our environment. We are toying with our air, with our water, with our land, and we are toying with the society as we know it. And I believe, as Councilman Hodge and I know Ted Shaw and others have indicated, that we need to make some pretty serious decisions based upon proper reflection and rational attitudes about where we go from here. So, I believe that all of us are here in this room together, trying to work out a solution. I am just one of you, and I believe that we can continue to work at that if we keep those lines of communication open with each other to work out a solution that will hopefully benefit all of the community, not just part of the community. Thank you all very much for being here this evening. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you very much. We'll get together and legislative council question.